Good evening, welcome to our special school board meeting. We're going to do an introduction of board members going around the room. We'll begin with...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mal Rapid.
Melissa Tracy.
Becky Glass.
Megan Carlson.
Larry Manning.
Michelle Tucker.
Administrative staff.
Pat Hopkins, superintendent.
Angela Hardy, director of brickwork.
Tiffany Hopple, building councilwoman, Rambach Consolidated School.
Carrie McGuire, director of technology.
And?
Tony Veat.
There you go. Perfect. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have is 5:04, we have 20 minutes for public comment, so that means we will need to be done by 5:24.
Yep.
Yes, and I need to read, so don't do that yet because I have to read the script. We're about to enter into public comment. Main state law requires public comment item, a public comment item on agendas of a full meeting of this board. Please note that the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. I also want to point out that under federal and privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel, particular student matters, any rumors presented as facts that compromise the privacy of others and any health or medical information protected as confidential. On any matter of concern, we would ask that you go through the appropriate administrative channels. We ask that speakers please address comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. Speakers may address items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda or any topic related to the school unit's programs, policies, or operations. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Please review the board pamphlet, "Welcome to Our School Board Meeting", that provides a copy of policy BEDH, Public Participation at Board Meetings, that explicitly outlines the manner in which the public comment will be managed. Individuals who wish to speak are required to fill out the sign-in form. Those who wish to speak will be required to state their name and the town or city of their residence before beginning their remarks. Consistent with policy BEDH, the board will hear public comments from residents and employees of the school unit first. If there is time remaining in the public comment period, once all residents have had the opportunity to speak, the board will permit comments from non-residents. The board will now entertain public comments for 20 minutes. Each individual speaker is allotted two minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced by Alyssa Tracy so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. It is 5:06.
I got two timers, I'm ready.
You go. All right, so the first person is Justin Basenger.
Hello, my name is Justin. I spent my public school career in this district, parent two kids in the district. I'm here today to reiterate what I see happening in our community. Outside groups are making personal attacks against our district staff, members of our community, and kids in our high school. Attacks of character, attacks against our LGBTQ community, and attacks meant to sabotage the future of the high school. There are three such groups I'll highlight. The first is Courage is a Habit led by Alvin, currently in a lawsuit for libel and defamation he caused against a member of our community. Allen from Prioritns Rights in Education was paid enough by PRA to send his kids to a private school out of district, also with a protection order against him. And Tim the Turd Slinger on X. All of these people, Allen, Alvin, and Tim, are close colleagues and friends of a couple members currently on the school board. These board members have gone through multiple trainings with these attackers. They've collaborated in multiple Zoom meetings together, they've been on streams and podcasts with these people over and over. They know each other well, they share an agenda. I'm here with a call to action for those board members. You have the power to act against this. You can publicly post online as a school board member telling your friends and colleagues, Alvin, Allen, and Tim, to stop attacking our community members, stop attacking our staff, and stop attacking our children. You took an oath to put all three of these first in your role, and you should take that oath seriously. You have the power to tell those people to get out of our community. They don't have any children here, they don't live here, and what are they here for? Money and an agenda to split our community. You can stop this, you owe it to MSAD 11 to stop this. Thank you.
Jen Scully.
Good evening, my name is Jen Scully, and I am a resident of Pittsburgh with two children attending MSAD 11 schools. I am here tonight because I am deeply troubled by the ongoing misconduct of certain board members who choose to misrepresent both the school-based health center and their fellow board members. Despite having received training on conduct and ethics, one board member blatantly violated the social media code by immediately posting an article on their school board Facebook page, which contained false claims that the school was not properly zoned for the clinic. What makes this especially appalling is that this board member knew the information was false. Well, zoning clarification were provided at the meeting the night before. The ethical breaches did not stop there. Later that same week, this board member spread further misinformation while testifying at the state house, falsely claiming that the chairwoman of the board stated parents have no role in decision-making and do not have the right to know certain things. This was a deliberate misrepresentation. The chairwoman's actual statement was discussing that it is the board, not the parents, who make decisions at the board level, a distinction that this board member knowingly twisted to fit a false narrative. Additionally, during the testimony, the board member misrepresented the findings of employee requests, alleging that emails from district staff colluded to keep secrets from parents. This too was a blatant lie. The board member had full access to these emails and knew that they simply clarified that the school could not send out a pre-formatted letter in support of the health plan. There was no collusion, there was no secrets. Yet despite knowing the truth, this board member chose to lie in testimony before the state legislature. These repeated ethical violations and intentional misrepresentations are unacceptable. They undermine trust, mislead the public, and create division within our community. Tonight, I am calling on this board to take action to put an end to this behavior.
10 seconds.
It is time for...
Ariel Sides.
Good evening, I am Ariel Sides of Gardner. I'm here tonight because our community is in crisis, not because of policy dispute or difference of opinion, but because a person who holds a public position of trust on this board has repeatedly violated that trust. The individual in question has shown a troubling and consistent pattern of unethical behavior. She has lied in testimony to state legislators about MSAD 11 administrators and members of our community. She has spread misinformation and outright lies. And worst of all, she harassed a child, an act so disturbing that it should disqualify anyone from any capacity in the involvement of the welfare of children. This is someone who is not just ineffective at her job, she is actively harmful. She has demonstrated that she cannot handle discord. Instead of responding to community concerns or tough questions, she deflects and redirects to unreliable ideologically driven sources. She has aligned herself with hate. This is not a metaphor or an exaggeration. She has publicly embraced individuals and outside groups that espouse bigotry, and she has accepted funds from nationally recognized hate organizations. This is not leadership, this is a betrayal of the inclusive and respectful values that our school must stand for. She has intentionally misgendered trans individuals, students, neighbors, and community members. This is not a misunderstanding or a slip of the tongue, it is deliberate dehumanizing behavior, and it puts our most vulnerable students at risk. Let's be clear, this person has barely met the requirements to run for this seat. Public record shows she obtained an address in Gardner just one month prior to the election. She won her seat not by earning broad support, but by exploiting a divided ballot and bending the rules just enough to get by. This is not who we are. Our children, our educators, and our community deserve better. Tonight, I ask this board not to look the other way, not to excuse or rationalize harm, but to remember what leadership means. It means accountability, it means honesty, it means integrity, and it means courage. It's time we held this BM accountable because silence is not neutral, it's complicit.
Jennifer Richardson.
Hi.
Jennifer from Gardner. Over the years, many individuals' differences have been misunderstood. For example, after the first cases of Tourette syndrome were identified, it took decades for people to understand the differences and accept that it was a difference out of the person's control. Becoming a special education teacher and working with children of various differences made me a better teacher, a better mother, and a better human. We don't get to choose if we're born into a healthy and supportive family. We don't get to choose if we are born into a financially stable family. We don't get to choose if we are born into a safe family. And we don't get to choose if we're born with a difference or not. I believe that it would be sad and closed-minded if I expected everyone to exist with the same strengths when we were all born to different families and into different bodies. I'm very saddened when I read comments on social media that there shouldn't be a particular program or support because they don't need it or they don't think other people should need it. I don't need this health center, my daughter doesn't need additional support to be successful in a classroom, my family doesn't need outside financial support. I'm not here to fight for things I need, I'm here to fight for things that others need. Public school should be a place where all children are supported regardless of the family they're born to or bodies they are born in. No person begins their day hoping to make it more difficult. Nobody chooses the more challenging path to success. Every student is successful if they can be. And if they aren't, we should work to find the supports to help them achieve success.
With that, we have to excuse you all because we have to go into an executive session. We are hopefully hiring a new elementary teacher.
Good enough.
So you can see the old one.
Former.
Sorry, I want to make a change. No, I do not have board numbers.
It is a surprise.
Oh, okay.
No, no, part of this was, it's not a conversation, we don't respond. We just, we're here to listen. That board members participate when we have items on the agenda to discuss. No, on the agenda, we have to stick to the agenda. Public comment is a wild, foiled card for the public.
There's a lot of lies being spread.
So, point of order, I want to stick to the agenda. I move we go into executive session.
I second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any questions?
Was that Molly or Linda?
Linda.
All those in favor? Need to remind board members... Those opposed? Opposed? Is there anyone opposed? I didn't see an opposition. Need to remind board members that we do not use any technology, no phones, no watches, no anything to record what's happening during an executive session. And I know we've had issues with that. I'm choosing tonight not to gather everything up and make it leave the room. But I do ask that everybody just please follow the law, follow the rules. All right, now we're... Thank you. All good. Welcome. Thank you. To me.
It's a request for leave of absence. Subsection six A. You need to look it up. So there's the motion to enter executive session. Second. And we're good. All right.
I need the vote.
Oh. I thought we did it. I'm so sorry.
Okay. All right, we're good, Terry.
Madam Chair, I entertain a motion that we grant a leave of absence for one of our staff members for one year's time.
Second.
Second by Tony. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries.
No.
Right. And we're adjourned. Watching from afar with my children.
We're adjourned? Yes, we're adjourned. I'm sorry. I was listening to two heads at the same time. Hope your kiddos are okay.
Thank you. They'll get better.
You know. They always do.
They always do.